You ready? Okay. Good evening. This is the Sandpoint City Council's special meeting for July 22, 2020. For the council, for the record, council members Williamson and Ruhl are participating remotely, and McAllister and Groth are present. Councilman Espiro and Councilman Darling are absent this evening. We'll now rise for the right to quote the lead. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God. The purpose of this evening's meeting is a workshop between city council and city staff regarding the fiscal year 2021 city budget. As a reminder, public comment will not be taken during these workshops scheduled for this evening and also a week from today on July 29. This is a council presentation and discussion item only, and no decisions will be made here. A public hearing, which will be, which will provide for public comment on the proposed budget is scheduled for August 19. Also, please note that this is a special meeting, therefore a public forum item is not included on this evening's agenda. It will be included on the agenda for the next regular city council meeting, which is scheduled for August 19. The budget is fully digital and interactive. A link can be found by visiting the news and announcements on the city website at City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will now lead us through the workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we've previously discussed, we have two budget workshops to discuss items within our budget proposal this year. This week's budget specifically going to focus on performance measures. So I'm going to be handing it over to Linda Heiss, our grants and performance management administrator here in a minute, to make that presentation. And then we will be providing council with an overview, Sarah and I, on our M&amp;L budget and the personnel plan for next year. Next week's, next week's budget workshop will focus on grants, updates on our master planning, as well as our capital projects that are included in our budget for next year. Typically, most of our discussion in our budget ends up being around capital projects and then some of the planning efforts. So this will probably be a shorter budget workshop this week with a longer budget workshop next week, talking about specifically capital projects. What I wanted to start out with tonight was, again, have shared the screen. And so for anyone who's watching that's members of the public or comes back to this at a later date and wants to follow through our discussions on budget, again, how to get to our budget. And then I'm going to, we're going to show you on specific pages that we're covering specifically for tonight. There is additional information in the budget, both over and above and beyond what we're going to specifically cover. Again, those details relative to all of our divisions and our service areas in the budget. We're probably not going to pull open all of those individual pages tonight unless council members have questions. We'll probably do more of the global discussion, but we will show the, the public exactly on our website where to find the stuff we're discussing tonight. So again, as the mayor mentioned, our electronic budget is available online. You can access it right on our homepage for the city, right under news and announcements. Our top item under news and announcements is our proposed budget book. If you click onto that, that will take you to a summary of that item. Or then, once you click on that, this is what you get, our proposed budget book for the year. And if we scroll down to our table of contents, again, as we're going through our discussion tonight, we'll come back to this page and kind of highlight where we are in the budget book for table of contents. Another thing I would note about this, so for our capital projects, we're still kind of going through and fine tuning that for our presentation, again, coming in next week. So what people may notice about our budget as we're going along through these workshops is that
Where were they?
... and update items electronically and republish a page with updated information. And we'll be continuing to do that. If council has questions on particular items and we need to provide better clarification for the public, we'll be updating pages as we go with that information. The overall amount in this budget, as adopted by council at the last meeting again, will not change. And there will be a public hearing in August and a chance for further discussion at the first council meeting in August. So with that, we're going to go down to performance measures, which is located under the introductory section of our table of contents. And you will see right on there a click to performance metrics. And that is what Linda will be presenting off of tonight.
We passed a code establishing performance measures for the city. And it's important when we look at these performance metrics that we tie them to the strategic priorities that are also embedded in the city. So what I'm trying to do with the performance metrics is to kind of tell a story about the strategic priorities and the success we've had at achieving those. Doing so, it's kind of like with grant writing, I'm the jack of all trades but master of nothing. So I'm learning so much about city government in so many different departments. And so I'm really relying on a lot of people to help me through this process in understanding both what are appropriate metrics and what is the source data we need to report on these metrics. And one of the challenges we have had is over the past year, in an effort to create this performance measuring goal, many of the departments have been establishing data sets so that we can measure goals and achievement of goals. And a lot of those, as a result, we don't have a full year of data yet. So in a lot of cases, we may not have a benchmark. And these are going to evolve as these data sets evolve. And the one thing I have to say, you know, I'm new to city government and looking at the success in the achievement of these priorities is pretty incredible what the city's done towards achieving these. So starting the story, we have our five strategic priorities. And I'm kind of just going to do an overview here. I'm not going to dig into every single data point because I figure everyone can do that and ask questions, you know, on their own. And I'm happy to answer any questions now or whenever. And if you have any ideas for metrics, talk to me about those too, and we can, you know, see if we have data to measure. So again, the five strategic priorities, responsive government, resilient economy, sustainable environment, vibrant culture, and livable community. So under the strategic priorities, the city has set a number of initiatives. And so the initiatives, many of them fall under multiple strategic priorities. So I've kind of grouped them in a way that seems logical, but again, they likely will fall under two or three. Under citizen, oh, this is updated, my chart's not here. This is a mobile version. Under, yeah, responsive government, we have expand citizen engagement. And I'm not sure why, this doesn't show the table, but my computer is showing, we have the tool Engage Sandpoint. And as part of that tool, that app, we can see how many, oh, yours looks different than mine.
Do I show on the graph?
I open exactly off the website. If you refresh. Yeah, because I like that chart.
I just logged on, website is there.
Yeah. Okay, good. So I wasn't going crazy, okay?
Okay.
And I changed so much, I knew, so it was like, oh, where are you? So expand citizen engagement. For each of these tables, you can open them and blow them up so you can actually see them. And so this one is nice because we can see within each area, you know, obviously it takes, it takes time to resolve a lot of these requests. You can't fix a road in 24 hours. But I guess the goal is just to acknowledge it so citizens know that we're thinking about them and understand that they have a request. And so, so we're setting goals there in relation to just really acknowledging those requests so that the public understands that we are taking their input seriously.
So can, can we drill down on that just for a second? So there we've got, you know, roughly half of those requests in infrastructure development services has been acknowledged.
But, and, and again, and all but two closed. So, so the, the one goal of accomplishing and completing them was completed at almost 100%, but yes, we can do better just acknowledging them.
So
May I?
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. So at times you can, when you get a request, you can address that request right in that moment and close it at the same time versus at times you have to acknowledge it while you figure out and investigate the issue. So you're acknowledging it and closing it. So I think there's just, that, I believe, is what you're seeing there.
Okay. And can, just a quick question. So as far as who's responding to those in each division, is that typically the, who is it in your department? Is it typically you? And say fire or police, is it typically you?
So for the police department, it usually goes to the captain, who then does a review on, and then makes an assignment. So if you look on the chart, you've got the police department, so it goes, it starts with the captain, and it may come my way, or he may handle it, or it may go to the patrol, or it goes to the CROs, so our community resource officers. You can see they have quite a few that'll go to them to deal with. And then it's either Angelo or Flavio, whoever's working.
We also have multiple hooks that help with it on our side. At times, streets will respond, but it's typically filtered traffic through.
And then who does it in parks?
I do it.
You do it?
Really? And I'm with you.
Just not on his phone yet.
Yeah, not on the phone. I do it in my office.
Okay, thank you for the answer to my question.
The other thing I would note on the citizen engagement for, from just a usability standpoint is sometimes you'll see an issue that is out in our Engage Sandpoint program, and it's showing as acknowledged, and it might stay in an acknowledged status for a, a fair amount of time. What we don't have ability in this platform, unfortunately, to do at this point, we keep kind of poking them, letting them know this would be a, a benefit, is we don't have a category to go from acknowledged to like in progress to complete it. And so actually, infrastructure area is a good example, where we may have an issue in the infrastructure area, we might have a pothole, we have something that we need crews to go look at, or we need to meet with a resident on an issue and then develop a solution before closing it. And so we leave that item in acknowledged status so that it doesn't get forgotten, that we can see for our own internal tracking purposes that it's something that's still in process, it hasn't been closed out. So once it's in closed out status, we've kind of moved on from that item, but that acknowledged status means we're looking into something, we're in communication with something. And so what happens in terms of management of the Engage Sandpoint platform, I go through those at least every other week, reviewing items as well, to see what we have that is still open. And in our leadership team meetings, follow up with where we are with resolving issues. And we're able to reassign also. So sometimes we'll have something that comes in, might be an infrastructure issue, and then we are reassigning it over to the CROs or vice versa. So we're in acknowledged status until that other division is able to do their follow-up and close it out.
And then for the update, updating city's comprehensive plan, we are in progress. And in these cases where we have a story already written by the expert, I am simply linking to their story. So if you click that, it opens up that story. And that way, the true expert is actually telling you what's going on instead of me who's not the expert. And I'm not going to open up every one of those because Sarah has a bunch of things open here, and I'm kind of scared I'm going to close the wrong thing. Grants, we will, next week, we're going to do another presentation of the grant story. Again, we've been awarded over a million dollars so far this year. We still have a number of grant applications outstanding, and we'll, we'll look at that a little more next week. Embrace Performance Management, clearly they've hired me, so, and we're presenting. So we're working on achieving that goal. And again, this is going to be an evolving process. Refresh Advisor Group charters, we have a, a number of master plans going on right now, and those charter groups will be looked at as part of those planning processes. And refine city codes, there are a lot of codes that have been revised over the last two years.
I'm having a hard time hearing Linda.
Let me bring the mic closer.
Thank you.
It's going to be the owl that's capturing the audio for, for Doug and Shannon, so you'll kind of have to project for Doug. Project more. Yeah. We've also tried to use some survey data in here to get public perception. So when we did the comp plan survey, I kind of designed those in a way where we had some questions that could be used going forward as performance metric questions, and we could redo those questions only on an annual basis and kind of start to have year-over-year look at the public perception and public satisfaction. So I've thrown some of these in, satisfaction with public safety is 4.19 out of 10. There are data in here that are not necessarily performance metrics as such, as data that is important to note about the, the unit. So, you know, for instance, fire incident type reports, how many fires are they going at, and vice, different types of cause. And in terms of police, the crime rate is obviously of much interest. And so this, this is a state report that is produced that talks about the group A offenses, and there's a list of them there on that chart if you open it up. And those are the more serious, serious offenses. Then we get into some actual metrics, again, with responsive government, concerning public records requests, workers' compensation, IT, budget, perm, building permits, vacation rentals. So again, in cases, in some situations, what you'll see is that it will be available in 2020 or it's in progress, meaning we're working on that data set now. And then I know specifically in the council meeting, the police use of force data was asked for as a metric to be included. Me and an officer at the police department, Ann Coria, have been looking into that data, trying to find a good national comparison that was requested. The only national data is survey data of people who were actually arrested, whereas our data is police reported data. Obviously, those two are not in any way, shape, or form comparable, and nor that can they be compared. So we looked into it further. The FBI has this year started a survey of police forces nationwide for police use of force data, where all the police departments will respond to this. It will be comparable data. And that, they did a trial run in January, and they said that they're going to release a full data set this year. So we are just waiting for that data set so that we can use that to compare us to the national. Drinking water and wastewater treatment, again, I've linked those stories for those master plans that are either completed or in progress. And just some data on water usage in year-over-year and monthly. Metrics on water treatment and distribution and roads. And this is one of those places where we, there are probably 100 data points. And so, you know, inundating people with all of this data doesn't really do a lot of good because most people aren't going to understand all that data anyway. So we really sat down and looked at what, what metrics are really important and how much do we really want to include? And again, this is going to be something that involves, and so we can tell the story once we really understand more about what data is useful here. But we have looked at DEQ violations and some national, nationally available data as well. Resilient economy, there's a report out that says Sandpoint ranked 140th nationwide and fifth in Idaho for the most business openings. So that's basically looking at how many opened, how many closed, what's the difference in who had the most. Within the resilient economy, downtown revitalization, we finished phase two, and it looks beautiful. Diversify the housing mix, here we're looking at the building permits issued and the housing of those, how many were actually housing the units? Because the important thing with this one is how many people are we going to be able to house given our shortage of housing? Also, last fall, we started the, the housing assessment. We were ready to do a housing survey to take the next step of that assessment, and COVID hit, and we just felt that at that point, people would be responding to that in the lens of COVID, and it may not be the right time to launch that survey. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that and continue with that. Over these, hopefully, I don't miss anything. So again, we're looking at some different data points, how many business licenses we have by sector, which is interesting for our community to see what kind of businesses we have operating within our city limits. Oh, it's still open black. I'm sorry about this. When I look at it on my computer, it is, the link is not black. I'm not sure why it's doing this. We'll figure this out. This was survey data from the comp plan that was really interesting in how business owners feel about operating businesses. And finally, employment by industry. So what industries, in what industries are we employing the most people? Sustainable environment, optimizing stormwater management, again, developing stormwater master plan, this is something that's coming this year. And then a vibrant culture, we are working on the public art and historic preservation master plan with the consultants on site this week. And we have goals related to that that are listed there. We've also got the STCU box wraps, we've got the silver box project. So I've put some pictures in there of some of our accomplishments in terms of city-led art projects. And then we have, again, some survey data about character of downtown and enhancing that character of note was maintaining the historic character for new or remodeled buildings. Downtown was the most often selected, and was selected by 73.6% of the respondents. So that's really important to our community. And going down to a livable community, which seems to primarily be parks and recreation heavy at this point, and multimodal transportation plan is underway, Parks and Rec master plan, the memorial field upgrade was listed as an initiative, that's obviously well underway, including the launch improvements. And then we have some parks and rec data in terms of both the number of parks, the acreage, and then participants and enrollments. So participants meaning the number of individuals who are participating, and enrollments being how many programs are they participating in. And then again, we have some survey data on parks and rec, facilities, programs, parks, that we can now ask those questions again year-over-year and see are people remaining satisfied, can we improve there, setting goals there. If, say, they're not happy with one service or one program, what can we do to fix it? And next year, can we get a better score? And then survey data on why people are not traveling by, or travel by their level of satisfaction with bicycling and with walking. And then since we're working on the, the master plan, the satisfaction of each mode of transportation. And then for bicycling and walking, you know, asking the respondents, why are you not traveling by bicycle? Why are you not traveling by walking? Because we really want to be multimodal, so what is preventing people from doing so? Again, some satisfaction questions, 3.94 on a scale of five for satisfaction, the city provided utility and infrastructure, water, sewer, and stormwater. And parking, 45.8% of respondents said they choose not to travel by vehicle because of a lack of adequate parking, and 40.4 that it's a deterrent to shopping. So, so parking clearly is somewhat of an issue. So that is the, the performance metrics as they stand now, the story of our, achieving our goals, which I think we've done very well. And again, this is going to be an evolving process. I think the, the goal that I'm working on and that everyone in the department is working on is establishing those data sets, and you know, they're really still disconnected. And in the ideal world, we would have a centralized data source where annually we could repopulate the tables in that warehouse with the appropriate data and then have a set group of queries. And in that way, annually, we're running the exact same data against the exact same definitions and really comparing apples to apples. Any questions?
I think it's great. Like, this is, so I've been in Sandpoint for almost 20 years, since I've been able to kind of see some heads and flows with constructions, ideas, and follow-through. And so I, I'm really, I'm treated that I'm in a place now where things are really getting done and doing, doing a very good job at it, and there's metrics to be able to compare what, what we thought that we wanted or that people wanted to what it is that we've created or built, and see what the, the response to that is. And so that is encouraging to me to be able to kind of exist in that growth space, because like I said before, I've been here for a while, and it, there's been a variety of different challenges. So really, really good job to everybody.
From a long-time observer, what I see is when Jennifer's leadership and the mayor and the council coming up with the strategic priorities, now we have a target to shoot for. And that's where everything's kind of coming in place. And so truly, it was a brilliant episode to get everybody together, come up with that commonality, so everybody's speaking the same speak, more or less, and working together. So I just want to give kudos, the way we're heading in. And, and to Linda's point, you're not going to have the Ferrari right out of the gate, but like we had enough, we had like not even a Pinto before. Really, we're making headway on, on our long-range and strategic planning and data-driven and all the things that are coming. And so it's just fun for me to watch.
Yeah, and so, and I don't want to take up too much with just going on and on, but you guys have, as a council member and as a citizen that's out there, you guys have given some great things to, to direct our public to, one of them being downtown. And here very soon will be the field. I get dragged by that all the time and be able to watch that evolve. And I value the, the critics. I value the input that individuals had said. They really were observing it from a glass half-empty as opposed to that, that vision. But if there's not a strategic plan, and in the past, things have failed, I can understand why they're skeptics. However, maybe we can put our skepticism in check a little bit more and kind of believe in Sandpoint a little bit more because we do, we have things to point towards, one of them, the byway. I know that that was a, a huge project in my time here. Downtown, that's another big one that I get to point to. And now, you know, the fest, or the, the field, and, you know, we're going to have more and more of those things. And you know, we're going to have more and more of those things to be able to point to.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we will move back over to the M and O budget presentation. So Sarah, let's go back to, so for anyone that is watching this, again, we are back onto our budget document as, as we have on our, our website. And I think we're going to go into, let's start with our appendix on our personnel allocations by FTE. In discussion around our M and O budget tonight, what we're really talking about is this is our salaries, wages. This is our supplies. This is small equipment that we purchase across the city. And this is then service contracts, professional services that we may be purchasing in different areas to support, really it's our ongoing day-to-day services that are provided by the, provided by the city. Overall, one thing I would note to the council this year related to our M and O budget and in particular relative to our general fund. Our M and O budget in our general fund is actually decreased as proposed for fiscal year 2021 as compared to the current fiscal year that we're in by approximately $142,000. So when we're looking overall at our personnel, our supplies, our small equipment, our professional services, what we budgeted with general fund dollars, which are primarily our property tax dollars. Some of our grants are over in general fund. Many of our fees are over in the general fund. We actually see a reduction of costs. And again, I will remind council and the public that also in budgeting revenues for this year, this year's budget included no increase in the levy lid for property taxes as we're allowed up to 3% by state statute. And second, we did not take any of the foregone. So, and these reductions and overall in M and O contributed to our ability to do that. Essentially, it's almost a straight one for one in the reduction of M and O with the reduction in our, as not using those tax dollars that potentially we could have levied this year for our budget. And looking at our, and I've got to look at it here on my computer because I can't see it. And looking at our overall budget proposal relative to FTEs for the city. The budget is presented includes 96.41 FTEs. So that takes into consideration our full-time, what we consider our year-round employees or some ways say permanent, but really it's our year-round employees and including our temp seasonal employees. So those are predominantly, when you look at this sheet, in our parks area as opposed to other areas across the city. When you look at what has happened over the last couple of years, we've done some conversion in our budgets where we had multiple temp seasonal positions and we've converted some of our, in some of our areas, particularly in our infrastructure area and streets and utilities where we had temp seasonal positions. We converted those to full-time year-round positions because we've had some challenges over the last several years with hiring temp seasonal employees. And, and then just level, levels of service and needs. We're starting to see more constant needs throughout the year as opposed to in one particular season over another. So we have done that conversion from temp seasonal to permanent employees. One other thing that you'll note in the budget is you can see subtle changes across our different areas with positions. In the past, we have allocated our positions based on where we think they are going to perform their work. And about two years ago, we implemented projects tracking in our financial software, which is greatly enhanced with our implementation of our new financial software this year where we have employees actually do time tracking. And so based on where they're doing their work, so it's no longer an estimate. And we particularly see this actually in our infrastructure area again, with the split of our employees across street work, utility services, and then within utility services across water and wastewater services. So they actually track their time based on what they're doing. And while we budget this for a year, we actually do a true-up each quarter as we're going through the year based on where time's actually charged. And you've seen in our budget for this year, as well as the budget presentation for last year, you can see some nuanced changes going with personnel based on actuals telling us where we think that they're probably going to be spending their time instead of carrying forward a formula from prior years. We have also included in the budget some planned reorganization within the city. And you can see that reflected in employees as well. We had a full-time position in our police department, which was front desk reception and administrative support. We have reclassed that position as proposed in next year's budget to another community resource officer, sir, for, so a third community resource officer to be out on the street responding to more minor reports, dog complaints, code enforcement issues, parking complaints. And it helps us achieve our goal of the improved citizen engagement, citizen interaction with having that person on the street as opposed to in the office. We'll talk next week again about moving forward with the remodel that we've been talking about here in City Hall actually for the last couple of years. And COVID kind of changed the thing up again as to what our design would look like. So we're in final stages of that again. But with the plan as we move into next year with completing that remodel and getting all of our front desk public service in one area, which enabled us to do this realignment for the police department. I don't know if you want to say anything else about that, Corin? We similarly have included a realignment, but it is additional FTE services in our parks and recreation area. We had a part-time administrative assistant in our parks unit as well. And again, with us really collapsing our efforts, reorganizing and consolidating our efforts across the city instead of a department-by-department or division-by-division approach. This allowed us to reorganize in parks and eliminate again a front desk position. And instead, what we have included in this budget this year for FTE in parks is a new position that would be involved with parks, strategic planning, land management, as well as overseeing management, project management for open recreation that we are discussing and have also included in the watershed area and open non-traditional recreation activities in general in the watershed, in our trail system. And then also supporting in a more meaningful and dedicated way our arts and culture efforts. So as it stands up to today, and much of this discussion actually occurred this morning with the steering committee and with focus groups as part of our arts and culture and preservation plan efforts this week is that our staff that we have on the city have done a great job in supporting our commissions and in doing what work they can to support activities and projects at the commissions. But we have not really invested in staff dedication to moving those efforts forward. We have staff that are interested, but it's been more of additionally assigned duty in addition to their regular job description as opposed to a position that is partially fully dedicated to moving these efforts forward. It was intentional in moving these efforts and with parks and recreation, arts and culture, we had talked about that. And there was public comment about that with our parks and recreation master plan. And it just seems to make sense in terms of community vibrancy and activity for that to be occurring with parks, recreation, and again, arts, culture. And we'll see what happens with preservation as a result of this master planning and likely will be in this effort as well. So those are the two positions to, that we have partial restructure as well as a new position. And then finally, in our IT and GIS services area, we're still in final stages of going through our report and recommendations from our IT audit and, and, and business planning, five-year capital improvement plan in that area. We expect to see, and we've had discussions about restructuring in that area. We'll be finalizing that and probably in a position to talk with council about that in further detail at next week's meeting as well as getting that online in advance for council to review what those recommendations are. One of those recommendations in terms of how we're structuring our IT, GIS approach is that we have a dedicated IT manager, business analyst on staff as opposed with that being contracted services or rather that being a service that we really don't have altogether right now. All of our IT services currently are contracted. Our GIS services, we have one person, dedicated person in-house. And then we have, I'm going to call our business management of what we do, which is kind of all of our staff that we have around the table and throughout the city. Where we have a disconnect in terms of how we are operating is really somebody driving that strategic plan and that alignment between technology services and business services. So our technology services right now are either coming from our contract IT group seeing a technology need that may or may not be fully integrated with a business need or it's been developed on our business side by one of our division heads. It's an issue that we're having in the departments with recommendations of improvements. But full implementation of that, really thinking about what is needed in terms of staff training and somebody who's really a driver of that effort is something that we're currently lacking. So that is one of the clear recommendations that will be coming out of the IT audit that we're clear on right now is the need to include this position as a city position. So we'll be doing an offset with contract services again to make that happen. So while it's an additional position for the city, we would achieve the additional position with the city through contract savings that we're currently outsourcing. And in all, when we take our organizations, reorganization into consideration and then where we are adding new functions, where we land at with that is it is an increase of full-time, year-round employees of 1.84 employees. So you're not at a whole person because we're accomplishing a lot of this through reorganization. Any questions on the staffing? And again, that, this page is out there and you can access it in the budget book. And we're giving you a multi-year look at kind of what's happening with staffing around the city. So we've done, we've gone up a couple FTEs, come down a couple of FTEs. You can kind of see that across that five-year look at our FTEs. But we've stayed relatively constant in terms of FTEs across the city. Our next item that we're going to go to, which is kind of gives us a good overview look. And it's in the format that council is used to looking at when we're going through the detail, particularly on our M and O budget. It's going to be the budget units, divisions and city service areas tab right there in our table of contents. So again, consistent with what we've done in past years, we've presented this information to council and the public with giving you two years of actual, the current year, what we had budgeted, and then the, the budget that we're working on, that would be our proposed fiscal 2021 budget. So what I thought we would do here is kind of go down each of our division service areas and again, highlight some of the key changes. What I would note on this, again, if we could go back, Sarah, to the, to that table of contents. If you want to look for more detail, you want to do a deeper dive and get into tables and, and see prior year expenses underneath that, that tab that we looked at with the budget union units. You can see elected offices, central administrative division, and you can see all of our different areas. You can click on all of those and look at the details of all of those areas and some of the narrative relative to M and O by going through there. But for purposes of this discussion, unless we have specific questions, we're going to stick with the overall view of the budget. And our elected offices division, you can see that we have a small decrease in the proposed budget for 2021 from the current budget for 2020. And that's related primarily to benefit changes. In our central-
Any comments on that one? Particularly, this is for the new council members. The senior council members will recall that in, I think it was 16 and 17, we proposed, it was originally proposed in the budget, an increase in salaries and wages for elected officials. It was commensurate with competitive salaries across the state and which is what we do for all of our wages for city staff. We, we, we look at what are the competitive wages for that specific position in the comparable market. And then we set our salary wages at that, at that benchmark. So that we're competitive in terms of salary, competitive across, throughout the, throughout the region. And so it was proposed, it has been proposed in those earlier years and not subsequent years to bring our elected officials' wages up to that similar comparative rate. And, and it's our, historically, elected official salaries have always lagged behind in Sandpoint. Particularly, they've lagged behind what's comparable in other similar towns across the state. And that's always been something that has trailed. So I think, I don't recall the last time that elected official salaries went up, but I want to say maybe 2014? Basically what I recall, maybe in 2014. I don't recall. Okay. And, but they've still, they've still been behind and each year they continue to get further behind. And I've suggested, I proposed in the budget in 16 and 17, that council look at that. Similar to the way that we do with staff, that we make those wages also competitive, compare, competitive with other elected officials across the state. And council has chosen to not, to not increase those wages and has chosen to disregard those, what those competitive rates are around the state. And so, so I just wanted to bring that to council's attention. I didn't, as you can see, I didn't, I didn't recommend that for this budget either. But I think that it is important that, that, that we as a council consider that. And I would just kind of posit that in going forward in the future, I think what would be a wise policy for council to consider is to, to propose a competitive wage rate for elected officials that would go into effect after the term that everyone is, whoever, like you two have the longest term, right? You watch, I did too. So we have three and a half years ahead of us. If we were to pass a competitive salary ordinance that, that would say that as we do with staff, that we keep elected official salaries- That we keep elected official salaries competitive, starting after our terms are complete. So that, so that none of us current elected officials stand to gain, unless of course we ran again and were elected. But that way it would kind of take it out of our hands, but we would at least set the table so that going forward, elected officials would be in a, in a competitive salary situation. And would be, you know, fairly compensated relative to other communities like ours across the, across the region. So I just wanted to mention that because it's not going to be part of our discussion here. But I think it's important for you to kind of understand that background and to understand that it wasn't requested in this budget. But I think that it should be in the back of our minds. And going forward, I hope that we can have that discussion in future budgets. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our Central Administrative Services Division. So this division primarily provides services to our direct public service groups across the city. So includes our, our administration offices, our legal offices, our central services, our IT services, our utility billing services. All, all under this category. And our Central Administration Services, you can see a reduction in the, the, the budget in, in that category. Due to professional, purchase professional and technical services. So the reduction that you're seeing here in the M&amp;O budget is primarily due to a reduction for the IT audit and evaluation services. That was budgeted this year and is completed this year. So there isn't a similar activity budgeted in, in that budget for next year. In addition, we have included in this budget in, for fiscal year 2020, Economic Development Services Support. And instead, we've broken that out into our projects budget. And so that will be part of our presentation at next week's council meeting. Otherwise, as you'll see, it kind of becomes a theme as we go through this generally. Again, our M&amp;O costs across the city, we've kind of held pretty consistent from this year going into next year. Where you are seeing increases related to salary and wages. That's predominantly again, due to step increases that are part of our compensation structure here at the city. As well as this budget does include a one and a half percent COLA. That is consistent with benchmarking and Nepal's review of what other cities were doing. So that's where you're seeing increases. Along employee benefits, you can see changes occur for a couple of different reasons. Number one, going back to the elected offices, we saw a decrease in employee benefits because of elections employees are making based on the offerings that we have. So you can see those changes when we're looking at employee benefits. Or in cases where you're seeing increases, it might be we've had changes in employee benefits. Where, for example, we might have had an employee who was single employee coverage, but then they've elected to go to family coverage. So you're seeing that change. But our budget also includes a potential 10% increase for medical and dental benefits, premium cost for next year. Again, we will see that kind of play out here in the next couple of months as we begin negotiating our benefit renewals. What we are hopeful and suspect is going to happen most likely is we don't expect to see premium increases for next year. But we budget for premium increases as a best practice.
So I just have a question out of curiosity. So the cost of living is it different in the private sector? Because isn't it about 2% to 3% than it is in the government sector? And you say cost of living was 1.2% here?
1.5%. And what we, we are coming up with our cost of living increases, our COLAs. It's based on what is happening with the salary market in government specifically. So we're not using CIP, for example. So it's not necessarily comparable to what you can see with increases in other areas. Similarly, it's actually not consistent with, so our fees, which we're not covering tonight, but will be coming forward. So like our mortgage fees, we increased those with the, the CIP, but, or CPI, excuse me. We have CIP too. But for employees, we're looking at what's happening in the government wage industry. So, and it's about retention of employees as well as recruitment efforts.
Thank you.
And Finance Services, again, what you're seeing is changes primarily in salaries and benefits. Related to the issues that I had, I had discussed. We're seeing some offset reductions due to efficiencies, decreases in postage particularly. We have some decreases in training costs because this year, much of our training was around implementation of new software. So we see some M&amp;O reductions in finance as a result of that. You see a new category this year, and it's not a new person and these are not new costs. But it's us breaking out a service again for most accurate tracking and allocation purposes. So our utility billing and customer services, those costs have traditionally been embedded in our utility funds. As opposed to you seeing them here in our, a general fund and as a separate service unit. But we have budgeted them here, we allocate costs. So again, Michelle tracks her time too, who is our person primarily responsible for utility billing. And most people know Michelle in our office because she is generally who you're seeing at the front desk coming into the city. She does an excellent job with customer service. So those customer service activities that she does not related to utility billing are general fund costs. What she does related to utility billing, whether it's garbage, whether it's sewer, whether it's water, those are allocated to those appropriate funds. But that's why you're seeing that sit here this year. And there isn't a comparison in previous years as we weren't doing tracking this way. In future years, you'll see this carry forward. So you'll have that kind of multi-year look that you're seeing with our other services. Legal Services, you see a increase in legal services due to anticipated increase in, in contract services. So again, for legal services, we are contracting out our civil legal services. We also contract out our misdemeanor prosecution services as well. And you can see with that again, even with those increases, we are seeing substantial savings overall to our budget. As a result of the model that we've implemented. Our Central Services Area, this is where our city clerk is. This is where grants and performance management is. This is where contracts management is. And it's formerly where we have, also had GIS services. And so the reduction that you're seeing there in salaries and wages and central services is as a result of moving the GIS budget over into an IT and GIS combined budget. So you see a reduction of personnel, you see a reduction of other associated costs for GIS in central services. And that takes us down to the category down below, our Information Technology Services. So you can see where we've moved position down into Information Technology Services. Our other purchase services, our contract IT and other support services for IT and GIS. And what you are seeing in there for, again, increase in there predominantly is due to moving the GIS budget out of central services into IT services.
Jennifer? I had a question, Jennifer, on the IT. It looks like the Supplies Budget has increased a significant amount. Can you speak to that?
Those will be changes that are a result of our, of our IT audit recommendations. And this is the perfect opportunity that we're actually going to pull open that specific story. So again, under the Budget Units, Information Technology Services is, is right under there. We have recommendations for some very significant upgrades next year in IT. That will improve our overall functionality as well as our ability to provide services to the public. So our, our overall IT budget includes $200,000 of equipment and upgrades for next year. 178,000 of those, 178,000 of equipment and upgrades are, that are one-time equipment upgrades. Are included in this budget that you're seeing right here. Those include implementation of an enterprise asset management system. So we currently, across the city, don't have really an effective asset management system. We have a number of spreadsheets that we're using across all of our divisions and areas, including out at our treatment plants. Implementation of a system like this also enables us to implement a fully robust work order system. Both for PMs, preventative maintenance, as well as responsive maintenance work orders. So this is where we start to make some of that connection that we don't currently have between Engage Sandpoint. And then how we're assigning work out to employees to ensure that fixes or needs get done. So for example, I'm just going to, sorry Amanda, I always use this one because it's just easy. A pothole, for example. We see a Engage Sandpoint request come in for service because of a pothole out on Boyer, for example. And so we're tracking that right now in Engage and having to follow up manually with crews. And inform them or send an email that we have a pothole that needs to be replaced. This helps us make a connection from citizen has notified us about an issue to we issue that out to our crews as a work order. For our crews to follow up and complete. Once that's completed, then our Engage Sandpoint request is closed out. So it's far more robust than just potholes or Engage Sandpoint. It really helps us with maintenance of our equipment, maintenance of our buildings, maintenance of all of our different assets with a preventative maintenance schedule. And ensuring that we're in compliance, we're on time, they're getting done. We know what needs to get done to best maintain all of our citizens' assets. This enterprise management system actually, as we went through the IT audit. And actually, we have this capability within our BSNA financial system that we purchased and implemented late last year into this year. So essentially, this expense is for full implementation and full training for all of our staff on using that module. So the benefit with this and with it being in our, in our BSNA software is typically a separate third-party EAM system. Is about $200,000 for purchase in and of itself. So this is something we've actually already purchased, we just haven't fully implemented. So this is the technical services to support implementation, the training, the BSNA folks coming back out for us to get this fully implemented and working. Second item is bid management software, which would allow us to more easily put our opportunities out. Where we've got projects, activities going to bid, for bidders to respond, including local businesses in our area. And for us to manage that, our procurement system. It's improvements to our electronic content management system. This is, we're currently using LaserFiche, but we've got kind of a mismatch of all kinds of different things we're doing for document management. And this takes us from our server-based platform to a cloud-based platform for document management. Which allows us to more effectively work mobilely. And in the case where hopefully we don't have this happen, but we have a situation like we did this spring where we had to stay at home. Or the ability for our staff to work from home as well. This also includes, we've included in this budget approximately $30,000 for a complete refresh and update to our website. And Councilwoman Ruhl, you will recall, because I know you were involved in the backend with some reviewing of this. And we're really championing this in the past. Our website is now about five years old and is really in need of a refresh for functionality. It has become what typically happens with websites where it's everything in the kitchen sink that is on there. And we frequently are hearing from citizens about issues with really navigating where information is. And then trying to get a consistent look across our website and our other platforms that we're using as well. It also includes moving to cloud-based applications for Office 365 and OneDrive. That will allow us to effectively work across divisions and across service groups in a department, in a document at a single time. It also addresses some security issues that we have in case of loss of servers, loss of systems. With our movement of our documents and of our programs online. And then we'll be discussing this further next week, specifically when we're discussing projects. But we've included upgrades for two of our conference rooms to become Zoom rooms. Renovation to council chambers, which we've been discussing, and wireless network improvements at City Hall.
Jennifer, will some of those IT supplies be covered under the CARES Act?
There's approximately 178,000 is CARES Act. And, and again, we'll cover that next week with the grant funding as well as, as specifically talking about capital projects. Did that answer your questions on IT, sir? Yes, okay. Garbage collection services, again, you see some increases in there and that's due to our contracts with Waste Management. And not necessarily city changes to that.
Jennifer, I just wanted to mention that I finally got that educational pamphlet just yesterday in the mail. So maybe we talked about that in September or October of last year, so.
That would be correct.
That was a little slow, but that was not on us, so.
Correct, thank you for pointing that out. So yes, that outreach was through Waste Management. And until they did their outreach, they were not to take bins, yellow take bins or anything else. So they're just getting to that point of education outreach this spring. Fiber optic network, again, primarily what you're seeing in there is increase in cost relative to management of the fiber optic network, which continues to grow. And again, property that's included in improvements there, that's where we are to improvements to the downtown core for the fiber optic project. And we'll talk about that further next week. Local Option Sales Tax Administration, you can see our overall expenses for that are going down. Because again, a reminder on our local option sales tax, as approved by our voters, that local option sales tax sunsets December 31st of this year. So we have budgeted for management and administration of that sales tax for part of the fiscal year next year. But that tax does sunset at the end of the calendar year. And well, actually, we're planning on sending out notices to businesses here about that in the next four, six weeks or so. So that people can get their systems changed so that they're not continuing to charge for the sales tax after January 1st. Because we don't want that either, because it'll be a lot of cleanup that needs to happen. So we're going to begin that outreach effort shortly. And then, LID funds. This is something that we budget that is a just-in-case. There is a need, a desire to create a LID. And it's something that typically has just been budgeted from year to year.
Has it always been at that amount, though?
It's, it's been that same amount for years. It just allows us the budget authority. If we did have an LID, we were able to do it during the fiscal year.
Our next item in 1970, our general government projects and grants, will be, that's really what our whole discussion is about for our next workshop next week. So, I'm skipping down to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Division. So. Kim, you are, you are up there if there are any questions. So, where you see some reductions in, in Parks and Recreation, we had a, we have a couple of things that have been paid off. We had a cabot of tractor that's been paid off, so that's not included in Parks Services. And I think that was kind of specifically our largest change in government buildings, grounds, parks. We did also have included in this year's budget a project which was completed that was reflected in government buildings, which was a replacement of our City Hall roof. So, that was a $75,000 project that was completed just in time because we got a leak this spring for our roofs. So, that's why you're seeing a reduction in government buildings and grounds. And overall, in Parks Services, again, we've got the FTE realignment and addition there and the same thing in Recreation Services. So, that proposed position is funded 50% in Parks and 50% in Recreation. Any questions on that item? Kim, I guess you're out of the hot seat on that one. Parks, Parks Concessions. We kept that consistent with prior years. We're doing some more review of, of that business model, revenue that's generated through that business model, and we'll have more discussion on that with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which incidentally, we will have the final draft of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan coming out to you. We hope by the end of the week, next week, we plan to have a discussion on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan at our first council meeting in August. So, but we want to give you the chance to review what's in it and the contents because you can see some of that reflected in the budget, and we'll be talking about that next week. Let's see. Well, Parks, Recreation Projects and, and Grants will be talking about next week. Impact Fee will be talking about next week. Capital Improvement Fund, those are capital projects, so again, we'll be talking about that next week. Same thing, our 1% Local Option Tax. So, generally, those capital projects, that will be part of our discussion for next week. Moving on to our Public Safety Division. In Police Services, you can see included with that some additional costs with our reorganization from an administrative assistant to community resource officers. So, we are at a different level on our salary chart, which does increase some of our costs there otherwise. And you're also seeing reflected in salaries and wages, the new compensation schedule that council had adopted at a previous meeting. So, you're seeing those combination of things there in salary and wages. Otherwise, M&amp;O costs in the police department, we stayed pretty consistent prior years. Capital Projects and Grants, again, that will be a discussion for next week. In Fire Services, you will note in our discussion item on the page relative to Fire Services, we are in the process of the Fire Services Operational Assessment and Business Plan Development now, with their final report due the end of August. So, what we've done for budgeting in Fire Services is we've budgeted anticipating, we're saying in the structure, everything is kind of the same as what it is right now. That may or may not be the recommendation coming out of the Operational Assessment and Review. We believe we budgeted appropriately that if there's change in structure, change in what's happening with personnel, again, it hopefully falls under this total maximum amount of budget that's provided here. There's been some, some discussion about, does administration maybe look differently with contract services? And if that was to look differently with contract services potentially, that could impact what is needed to be budgeted, not necessarily in terms of what the overall costs, net costs would be to the city. But for example, if something came out of this that for some reason, rather than the administrative structure that we're in right now with each of the entities pretty much operating independently and billing back and forth, if a recommendation, for example, could be contracted with the city as, as maybe a lead, and again, this, we haven't gotten any of this yet, but if that was the case, there may be a possibility that we would need more budget to administer a system, but net, we would fall within this, this budget that's presented to, to council here. I would note in this budget too that Chief Hopkins is our interim fire chief. He is an employee of Westside Fire District. This budget as presented contemplates Sandpoint hiring a fire chief. Chief Hopkins is in that interim capacity through the end of this fiscal year based on, again, completion of that Operational Assessment and recommendations. So, this gives budget authority. And if, based on that assessment, there are some structural changes, again, we believe we have the budget here to account for that. We did not do much budget discussion on Fire Services because it basically at this point anticipated just functioning as we are right now. Hopefully, that long explanation is clear on Fire Services. Fire Projects and Grants. We're not going to get into an in-depth discussion about this at the next meeting, so I'll cover this tonight. What you can see included for next year, but year's budget is our ongoing payments for the ladder truck. And you see a reduction in that overall budget because the breathing apparatus for the Fire Department, it was budgeted in the City of Sandpoint's budget as, as the lead this year for a grant. It ended up being Segal that was the lead for the grant, but that all three entities benefited from a grant of breathing apparatus, which we actually desperately needed for the safety of our firefighters. So, you didn't see that grant carried forward into next year. We were successful in that one. Any questions on Public Safety Division? Chief Ken said he would love to be in the hot seat.
I told the council member, my goal is not to say anything, so I just lost.
So far, you've all been fairly successful about it. Let's keep that rolling. Moving into abandoned area, Infrastructure and Development Services Division. In Planning Services, you primarily are seeing that budget remaining constant. Again, you're seeing some reflection of changes in salary and benefits due to, due to step increases, potential benefit changes, that type of a thing. In Building Services, you are seeing an increase in that budget to include an FTE dedicated to building inspections, code enforcement, and fire inspections. So, currently, we've heard in the past that fire inspections have been led to the level that we've been doing them through the Fire Department. It is the recommendation from our outside consultant in terms of best practices, as well as from our interim fire chief, that our inspections be moved into our Building Department. And so, with a building inspector, what we would be looking at with that and supporting Christine as our building official is conducting those business, annual business inspections. So, our business inspections using the criteria for use permits program we launched this year is, it's about 700 active businesses in Sandpoint should be inspected at least every other year. A significant amount of them because, so like restaurants, theaters, areas where we get a lot of the public coming in or where we might have hazardous materials as well, those buildings should be inspected annually. So, this is providing the level of service we need for those inspections, but also ensuring that we have the FTE available and provide the level of service needed related to the amount of building and development we have occurring in the community. We have many multi-year developments that are coming through the pipeline. And particularly, we've, we've got several that are multifamily projects that require a significant amount of inspections. One of the pinch points that we're running into currently is we have one building official who is essentially responsible for all of those inspections. Some of those inspections require that she be out at the time that the work is being performed. So, like in the case of a concrete core or a foundation or something similar. Well, we've got multiple of those occurring across town. We have one FTE to respond to those. And this has been a pinch point for our builders and developers. It's just our ability to get out and timely get building inspections done. And it's, again, as a result of the volume of building and permitting that we're seeing coming through. We, as noted in the stories, when you look through our discussion on these items, we are finding that we're having to contract some support services because we expect things to be, this isn't a permanent situation for a lot of this development. So, we can contract services is more efficient and cost-effective for taxpayers as opposed to personnel. But in addition to that, we are in need of somebody to support code enforcement, code building enforcement. We've kind of pushed some of that work to, to the crows where we could, but our crows are maxed out with code enforcement issues in general. We have a lot of loose and barking dogs lately. Seems to be a growing trend. We've had more and more parking issues. And as of late too, it's also becoming boat parking issues also. So, as we're looking at what the crows are doing today, we had a boat that's more nicely off of our kayak launch. So, those kinds of issues are, are popping up for us as well. So, we've included that with Building Services.
So, in Building Services, how many FTEs in total?
Building Services has, if we go back to, where's my other sheet?
Is crews considered part of Building Services?
Partial, part, partial.
Partial.
So, it's like two and a half directly Building Services?
Sarah, Sarah can give you the.
I give you the exact amount.
I'm just curious. See, it's 182,000.
It'll probably be something like about 2.43 or something along those lines.
Yeah.
You can carry on.
We also have administrative support for building there as well, I believe.
Yeah, so administrative support, like the role Amanda plays, we allocate her to her various service group areas too. So, again, when we are starting to look in these different areas, and that's the difference from what we've done in the past with these allocations, it really starts to paint the picture for us from a management standpoint of what these services actually are costing us in addition to the dedicated employees adding oversight and support for those employees in that service area here.
That's great.
2.7.
Thank you.
I thought we were going to get some 4.3, 6.1, or something along those lines. And then, finally, in Street Services, you can see again, we've relatively consistent level of M&amp;O. You can see some changes in employee benefits. Again, to, due to employee elections is what you're seeing happening there. Down below that, 3170, street and sidewalk projects. Again, we'll be talking about projects in next week's meeting. In Water Services, in IDS Administration and Engineering. What you start seeing in these areas with salaries and benefits really is reallocation of salaries and wages to the budget categories where they belong. In the IDS Administration, that's where the, the utility billing used to be. So, that's a lot of that was pulled under there, that the majority of what that increases in that. So, again, that gets allocated based on where, where Michelle is spending her time, rather than having a formula and allocating Michelle's time the same as Amanda's time, the same as Dan's time, which is typically what we have been doing in the past, is an estimate of the allocation. So, Michelle's and how she spends her time and across the different funds actually looks fairly significantly differently than Amanda's. So, again, by breaking out utility billing and how Michelle's spending her time, she gets allocated according to what Michelle was doing, so. Projects, again, we will cover at next week's meeting. Waste Water Services. Again, you can see some allocation of, of reallocation of employee time in Waste Water Collection Services, as well as Waste Water Treatment Services. And I don't know if either one, one of you want to talk about kind of reallocation and why that looks a bit differently, probably more Amanda?
And this may relate to this question, but particularly in water treatment services, there was a $230,000 increase under miscellaneous.
Under which one, I'm sorry?
Miscellaneous.
Water Treatment Services.
Oh, Water Treatment.
Yeah.
Can you put the story, please? So, the difference is $122,000 in the capital equipment and machinery is specifically what that jump includes, which we'll be covering in our capital discussion tomorrow. Or, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, next week. But it's primarily equipment-related. I'm getting it. Wait, easiest to go there. That's the reserve. The increase in that is the reserve that we put in. This is a hard one to explain because it's, it basically is a reserve that we put in there to fund the bond payment. And it's kind of, we have the bond payment budgeted, but this is the reserve within the water fund to make sure that the water fund itself has the money to pay the water, the, the bond. That's what that is. That doesn't actually, isn't even the equipment. That's the equipment, capital equipment stuff here.
The capital equipment and machine.
There you have it, $122,000. What's the difference from last year, right?
Carrie?
Okay. Waste Water Services. So, again, with. Wastewater Services, so again, with wastewater services, you're predominantly seeing reallocation with personnel, and you can see that again when you look at Collection And anything else from wastewater? Again, wastewater projects, that will be part of our discussion next week, which again, takes us to our total for the budget overall, again, particularly, it's what we look at when we're looking at our differences in M&amp;O, kind of a quick snapshot, one of our easy quick snapshots we look at, at how we're doing in terms of M&amp;O costs going up and down for our taxpayers, is looking at our general fund M&amp;O. And overall, as we come through the general fund in those categories, again, we have an overall reduction of $142,100 in M&amp;O costs in the general fund. You will see next week, as we move into a projects discussion, we have a significant investment in next year in projects, and that was intentional to align with completion of our master plans, and then efforts to undertake projects as identified in those master plans. So we had some carryover dollars from prior years of in excess of a million dollars. We allocated all of those carryover dollars to projects, one-time capital projects, as opposed to increases in M&amp;O costs that would be ongoing increases. And now, Mr. Mayor, is.
Great, yeah, excellent, thank you. Any questions from council? Anything else staff would like to add?
I guess the last comment I would make again for council members on this is, as you're going through this, because I know we get through the presentation, you all make notes, and then kind of go back through, taking a look at items again, if you have specific questions on the budget, please contact me directly and talk with me about it. Those discussions will not happen outside of the, outside of a public presentation. Once I get that information where there's questions individual council members have, I take all of those and come back at one of the next meetings and include them in a presentation to the full council and the public. Typically, a question that one council member has is something that other council members have as well, so that's kind of the easiest way to work through that, and that's what we've done in past years. So I anticipate we'll see some of that roll over into next week's workshop, and we planned our workshops, so we've been going into that first meeting in August. If there's still questions that council members have, clarifications that you want, we have a third meeting that we can have further discussion before the public budget hearing.
Counsel, any questions? All right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.